Yeah.
I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is January 7th, 2025, 7:00 PM, and we are in the municipal meeting room. I'd like a roll call. Start with the far end.
I'm honored to go. Sam Picas with North Star Planning.
Marty Kane.
Zachary Shapiro.
Paul Green.
Tom McGinn.
I'm Rich Gonnong. I'm the chairman. We have approval of the agenda. Approval of minutes for December 10th, 2024. We have time for public comment. We then have a public hearing. BW Campground LLC, a conditional use application. Following that, we will go into pending business for BW Campground Realty LLC. And when we are done, we will go home.
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Motion made by Paul Green, seconded by Marty Kane for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes for December 10th, 2024.
Second.
Who seconded, Danny?
Me.
Okay. Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn to approve the minutes of December 10th. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Oh, I guess we have an abstention. And since there's nobody here from the public to make a comment about anything that's not on the agenda, considering that you're both here for the agenda, we will just slide right by that and go into the public hearing. It is now 7:05, and I will call the public hearing to order. Does anyone from the public have questions for the applicant? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:05, and we will move on to board discussion of the application. This is BW Campground Realty LLC, a conditional use permit proposal to modify uncompleted phases three through seven at the existing RV campground in accordance with the planning board's conditional use approval in 2017. The modifications to the campground include changes in the design and reduction of the total number of RV sites from 185 to 151. Changes in the stormwater management system and other associated minor adjustments in the layout. The owner of the property is BW Campground Realty LLC, and the applicant is Bentley Warren, and the applicant's engineer is Frederick Light, PE of Light Environmental Design LLC. Take it away, boss. Show us what you got.
Can everybody see the board? Okay?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. Rick Light, again, Light Environmental Design, and Andy Kaskis here.
You gotta speak up.
Oh, sorry. The contractor extraordinaire who you've met and has constructed most of the campground or all of it. So tonight, we're here hopefully to look at final approval, and we have taken a look at the final approval draft conditions, and I have a couple of comments possibly to discuss with the board, but I'd like to maybe start by going over where where we are with the plans, and just basically I've been informed on a couple of changes that have been made since our August and September meetings with the board. That would be helpful. First of all, sixteen. The left half of the project, vertical ventilation again. Main road coming in with the original campground down the stick. And from the sidewalk, this was that phase one, A-Lo with fifteen sites. Andy Payway is phase two. The brown, no, I'm sorry, the blue, excuse me, is phase three, Lisa Lane. And and then we go across that culvert with the supreme crossing. Sidewalk, you can get into phase four. And and then it's four. Phase four turns into phase. The phase five is over here. That's peninsula, and then the phase six and seven. The big thing I want to sort of reinforce from the application is the fact that, you know, we had an original permit, 2017, as the board is aware from preliminary meeting. And after the seven-year period, we had, we're back here for a new permit for anything that wasn't built. So phases, the original phase, phase one, phase two, and fourth, or phase three have been built, so we're looking to permit as a different project. The big sort of takeaway is the original plan had 187 sites. We totaled the whole campground, 187, not to say today's is. And by making the sites bigger, fundamentally, the plans never did change the main access road as exactly as it was. We got rid of what used to be a boom road down here, but the fundamental layout of the project hasn't really changed much. But we made the site bigger. We went from 187 to 151 sites. So that reduces the pervious area, reduces, you know, a lot of different things that have an impact on wastewater and whatnot. So, you know, typically people cut back the plants and they go up, but we went down in terms of our overall density.
But isn't that true that you made some of the the sites larger than they originally were? So they're like double spaces for larger vehicles and everything else. So I mean, in reality, if you consider two spaces as one now, right?
Right. They have some that you can back, you can back in.
Yeah.
Pull in or back in.
Yeah.
People don't, Bentley said, people don't like to back in, you know, the big yard.
You don't back the buses that easy.
Yeah. So they allow them to go in one way or the other. You're right. So and because, obviously, you know, in front of the sidewalk, trying to basically take the sites and make them viable for the Class A's, you know, seventy-five, it's seventy-five foot site. Some people have the trailers behind them. You need more. It doesn't mean that all sites are Class A sites, but try to make it, you know, for Bentley's purposes, as many as possible. And we've also, you saw on the sidewalk, we've got several park models, and they, you know, put out the sites themselves. And those are bigger, seventy-five feet, but they're maybe sixty feet long. So that's the good part. And again, the real, the only fundamental change in the plans which steps to our DEP permitting is all from our submission originally was that the original project to call it stormwater beyond these phases here, and we have the stormwater going down Bentley's home over here, to the pond here. And the biggest change now is that Bentley would prefer to not dig up this pond and make it into what we call a DEP pond. They're not as aesthetic, and he just likes to look at that pond. And so we spent quite a considerable amount of time and effort taking each phase, phase four, its own stormwater filter, phase five, stormwater filter, phase six, et cetera. So which from a practical, you know, talking to Andy from a practical construction perspective, unless you build each phase, it sort of encapsulate that phase and not have to reach out. But obviously, the cost of doing so would have been a lot easier just to keep the pond, but that's not the case for it sometimes. So it does make phases easier from that perspective that we deal with stormwater. And that's really the only fundamental change in the plans. We've made some adjustments to the wastewater systems that are shown on the plans or the drawing set, but they're basically based on original testings. So most of the wastewater systems that are being proposed are within the realm of the ones that were originally on the plans. The other thing that we've added, there's a letter from the fire chief, Stephen, since, on January 3rd. And we had talked to the chief about fire needs. The board may recall from the original plan, we did, a hydrant was required on Route One. The original, that was done, been six months, the original approval was installed right by the saloon, been salooned in the campground road. And there was going to be a dry hydrant, you recall, on Bentley's pond, but since we're not, they can't pond anymore, that wouldn't have been on it. So we met with the chief to ask about fire requirements and what he had suggested. Put in a 10,000 gallon cistern around 2,000 feet into the property. Where that puts us? It's about right here. We propose a cistern, this location right here. We provided a detail of the plans. A concrete cistern, and with storage connection. And so we've got to go up the plan to coordinate that with the fire chief. When they build out phase four, then, you know, but we wanted to put the cistern somewhere. We did think of a lot of land, you know, so pretty big tanks, there's six-foot deep tanks, like five, five, eight, two of those together. So that's, that leaves the fire requirement. So we did get a letter sent to us, I think, from Ann, that that the, yes, at this date, there are no additional needs. The fire department, please reference the town of Arundel Landings or just for cistern requirements. If you have any further questions, don't hesitate to reach out. So I think we satisfied the chief. And in our submission, a couple of things that I'll just point to that we probably read, but just, just that we addressed on the plans, or final plans. And I want to go through these, maybe not in this order, but I did want to review some of the plan notes. I'm going to flip the plan over. Plan C 101 in a minute. But first of all, the only other thing that we really had done, we addressed these, for the staff comments and the planner, we addressed the section 9.3.10. We went through Ethan Campground and testing standards under 9.3.10, and showed how we applied and meet those standards. And that's pretty much it in terms of changes. So there are two things we wanted to discuss. The one we did in preliminary, one was the waiver in our our waiver request is, as it was at the preliminary, we had discussed it, is that we still don't have a DEP permit. The DEP is, I think, it's been 11 months since we submitted the DEP. We did have comments finally from the department in September, and had a sidewalk with a DEP in September, providing responses to their comments, and October, November, December, and January, we still haven't received final permit. So you know, we're still working on the DEP, but we would request if the board is agreeable to, if the board's in a position to approve the plan, to additionally approve the project subject to receipt of a DEP permit, rather than hold the project up. We don't know how long it's going to take to get the DEP permit if the board is agreeable. So we requested that waiver per section 10.5.3 of the ordinance, which requires the permits be secured prior to the board making finding of completeness.
Question for you, Rick. On the, on the permit, have you given us copies of the application?
Yeah, the DEP, we are required to give the town one copy, hard copy of the application.
Okay.
In the plans.
Yep.
Just over to Dan, to Ann's office back in
Okay.
February, February of last year, I think.
I just, I, I don't remember that far back.
Yeah, I don't either. I don't think. So the other thing I wanted to discuss was in terms of the plans. And two things, actually. One was the, the conditions, the findings, the fact, but also the substance of the plan, you know. Board may recall, put this over. What we call Plan C 101 is sort of a site plan. The one sheet site plan. I know it's hard to see, and I apologize where you're sitting. It's the whole site. Route One. Post, post road, that's the Warren property. Farm pond. Again, phases, original phase. Phase one, A, two, three, four, five, six, seven, at smaller scale. This is the plan that the board would be signing. And what we did is, you know, most of the notes that we went through that, that lasted the 2017 approval, we had a number of notes that were added through the final planning board meeting about asbills, about conditions for the fire, the hydrant, et cetera. A lot of those notes aren't germane anymore because we already put the hydrant in the ground. So we went through, and I don't know if the board's had a chance to redo that, but went through and cleaned up the notes, and they then kept most of them on there, but they then wore burden to today for things that have already been done. We took off, we're proposing, which is now completed. But a couple of things I did want to discuss with the board, and one relates to the draft findings of fact, is just findings of fact, number two. Is the board will call, the original plan, 2017, we discussed rather than having a cash surety or a performance guarantee, the board agreed to a conditional guarantee. That conditional guarantee, which we do on a lot of projects now, is based on sort of, it's called an occupancy permit. As you build out each phase, we did an asbill. We submitted it to Tad Redway at the time, and to Jim Nagle. I understand it's no longer. Sorry to see him belt. And they would give us, it's called an occupancy permit for that phase. We did our end of the bargain for each phase that we completed, one and two, we submitted asbill plans, a letter certifying what was done. And we never really got anything from the planning department. We never got anything back saying, so we just went on our, did our business. If the board wants, we would prefer to do a conditional guarantee. Just the way the campground goes, if the board's comfortable, we're happy doing that process again. And continue to do a conditional guarantee rather than a performance guarantee. If the boards, you know, would be willing to, you know, make a change to that, that, that item number two in the conditions of approval. The second one is the the timing and the item number three of the conditions of approval. The last plans, I think the board members who are here will certainly remember, we had the whole, the seven-year period. We discussed it at that approval meeting back in 2017. When you have a phased project, you can see it's been seven years. And honestly, they've only built one, two, and phase three is about 90% done. But we've only built three phases in seven years, essentially. And other work has happened, too, in terms of, they've done some clearing, the running, they've got stockpiled back here, work areas, but from a functional standpoint. So to have the typical site plan review, you don't do any work within one year, completing in two, completing in two years, it's, it's not for seven phases, six phases of work. It's not going to cut it. Can we go back? Is the board willing to consider going back to something like a seven-year period again, or some kind of conditional by, because each phase we're going to be submitting an asbill? Something that says permit's good for seven years, or some time that we can all discuss and agree upon, rather than having the standard one-year, two-year? Because this isn't a typical site plan where you're going to build a a Rite Aid, and you go in and get your financing upon approvals, even these days, financing could be a year, easily a year. And then you get your contractor, get your construction documents, go to construction, and you try to get your building up. This is a phased project. It's not similar really to the, the Cape Arundel project, which has taken us 11 years. It's being, basically being wrapped up this coming year. So if the board's willing to have a conversation and maybe adjust note number three, we'd be, certainly be willing to entertain all. Yep. Um, I think, plan notes. Those are really the changes. The last one again is, you know, the wait and the waiver again for the DEP permit, the board's willing to entertain that. Well, there's one item that I, we did bring up with the DEP, and we brought it up on our application. Is that area right here. We have a burl pool on site. Be aware of. Significant burl pool. It's a 150-foot buffer. And under our NRPA permit, under our NRPA, the category 35, well, I you know, we cleared 45% of the 250-foot buffer. And we had that all calculated out, it's on the plans, and unfortunately, we end up clearing a little spot right at the gear that wasn't supposed to be. And so we proposed, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And we brought that to the DEP, and so we proposed that area being vegetated. That's in our DEP application as well. It was a mistake on our part that we vegetated this area right here. Uh, right, but not realizing beyond what we're permitted for.
Yeah.
So we just wanted to bring attention to that. That is in our DEP application.
There's a question of clarity on that. It's, you're saying that it was disturbed, and now you're, you're gonna?
We just, we disturbed it by mistake, and we're going to, we've proposed replanting, so it's vegetated. It's a couple thousand square feet.
Thanks.
Okay. Other than that, I think that's, do you have anything to add?
Now, question, please. You said your water, your, uh, the new cistern is going to be, and how often is that going to be maintained? And you guys are going to maintain it for water levels throughout the year?
I think, through the chair, I think we would, the chief's going to want, I don't know how many, probably just, just take a stick and check it once a week, or it's often.
Normally, normally, there's a gauge on the outside that will tell you.
Well, there's quite a bit of piping stuff. Yeah.
But they do leak, which is, which is the problem.
Yeah, they can, they can, they can, they we, yeah, we've put these in before. We've got a couple of big ones in well, I think, the 30,000 gallon, as a matter of fact. And you can, you can get sophisticated with them. You can have control. If you have power, you can have a electronic, you know, gauge from your flows. But I guess we'll work that out with the chief, whatever he wants, to make sure that we
But I, I know he said in the past he has had, they check them for at least once a year to make sure that there is more than ample flow in there in cases of a need. But also, too, at the same time, you want to put down that, that is part of the overall plan of the, the park for either Bentley, who owns it now, or any future, if it ever gets sold, they have to maintain that also along the way.
Right. We can make, we can make that part of the conditions of approval.
Bringing it up now so that it won't be
I'm right there with you, Marty. I think, I, I think it needs to be established that the owner of the park is responsible for the maintenance of the cistern. And you can, the fire chief will come out and inspect it and determine its level, and they will refill it if, if need be. They're not going to deal with replacing it. That becomes your, the owner's issue.
Great.
Yep.
I'm so unfamiliar with cisterns, but how do you fill it up? Do you have a truck come in and fill it?
Either with a swimming pool or something like that. Pool truck and/or it's the fire department, you know, it's big, they should, the fire department, they bring their tank around. They have a, like a 10, they'll quote 10,000 gallon tank, I think.
Two, five gallons.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, but they fill a pool, for instance.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to, just curious whether or not you're doing it from well, or
Well, it would probably be, I did that, but I'm sure, you know, if there was, if there was a, yes, like nearby, something, you could probably sit the whole time.
Just, just a top, at all.
Yeah, you know, or
Well, I know.
Like I said, that would help with my, I put it, funny, it's something, but
Most, most of the cisterns that, that I saw when I was on the department have a connection for the, for the the number two hose, that big connection like that. You'll see them on the outside of buildings. They'll just plug in and empty the tank right in there.
Yeah, and, and, and you're right, and it's, it's, you know, a good bumper at 1,200 gallons a minute.
Yeah, takes no time at all.
Seven, eight minutes, the tank's empty. Yeah, yeah. It's just for the initial to get the fire to control and then jockey or tanker truck back and forth. But yeah, we're happy to take a condition, either a note on the plan and or a condition of approval. We're happy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have one more question. So the stormwater system that you're doing now, instead of expanding the pond, so DEP is aware that you're doing it that way, and there's no or do, must you make them aware that you've had a change?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
So all of that has been, is, is you've communicated with the agencies, the necessary agencies to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Correct. The DEP will have to sign off on that. Typically, and, and through the chair, you know, when you do a DEP application, typically the biggest biggest nugget every year with stormwater, these days. So the main thing that made us go back by doing all that, each pond, though, we have to give design details of every face of these, they're called, 100-drain soil filters. You know, we have details of each one and the size, the depth in each of these. But just while we're discussing, the way this work, if you see the ones on site that Andy built, they're really pretty, pretty cool, actually, because
Yeah.
they have a filter that they work. They actually, sometimes they actually work. The water that comes out is underdrained, you can drink. I mean, it's, it's, they're, they're pretty good. Andy's built one, they've built, they're beautiful, you know. So each phase will have one of those for that thing.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty interesting.
Yeah. And the DEP will then include that, and they're, they have the same drawings, you know, with all the detail they reviewed that.
Well.
We reviewed those when we did the sidewalk.
You think we should do another cycle?
No, we reviewed all of that.
And we did the sidewalk. How many of you were here on the original plan? Tom was here, Marty was here, I was here. Guys, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought on the original set of plans, we had said that we were going, every time he finished a phase, we were going to go in and review it, or at three-year increments, and the, and the so, so that if he didn't get phase one finished, at the, three years later, we'd be in there taking a look at it. But the entire permit was for seven years. We're at the end of the seven years. Do you want to go back and, and say, okay, we're going to extend it for seven years, or do you want to look at it and make it similar to what we did the first time? We'll review it in three years or when he completes one of the phases, whichever comes first?
I like that idea.
Alright, because that's, that's what we did originally. It was it
Why I say I like that idea better is because if there's anybody, anybody transition on the board, it's not somebody going in blind.
Yep.
I have a question for the applicant. What are the plans? Where, where do you see that, how long it would take to complete all the phases?
Each, all the phases?
Yeah.
It's, it's hard to predict. I mean, let's, let's be, let's be honest with you. Bentley's getting older. I mean, it's, Andy's getting older. I, it's hard to say.
But this, I didn't, because I'm not working.
Yeah.
For phase, what do you anticipate for phase?
Year for phase, something like that.
You know, it's very hard, yeah. You know, it's, it's a lot, everything, but definitely because funding has to go.
Mm-hmm.
And, and and sometimes we get sidetracked on some other projects. You know, I, I expect six months, I expect a year during the last project, we're open, loud at the, at the speedway, but that would kill the team over there. So, you know, things come up and, and we get kind of and with the campground already being operational, I can't work as much as I sometimes to move that, their open.
Well, there's there's no, no rush on, on our end, but I, I think if, if we just make it a seven-year plan, the, the way it's been going is you're, you're in before us every year or two anyways. For, for us, usually there's unforeseen changes. So I think if, if we had it
I mean, the, the way the original one was, at the end of every phase, or three years.
Right.
And we'll give you a seven-year permit.
It's not unreasonable to have some kind of you know, time constraints or time markers, so to speak. And I think three and seven
Right.
work pretty well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, it's before, yes.
We, we did do asbills, and they went that way, and somehow we've, we've got a gradually flat of that section on the last two phases, that, correct, right? Yes, we did, yeah. But, you know, you have to do plans, plan out, sell out, and, and buildings, stuff.
And new codes enforcement officers.
I think the same as it was.
Three and seven.
Yeah, I see no reason.
Well, every phase or every three years.
Right.
And I think that's the way note 11 reads. I, I think the wording is exactly the same on note 11 of the, of the chief's C 101 in front of me.
Okay.
As they said that. The, the board is, I just sidebar here, the board, over the hall, members that were here, way back in the days, there was the discussion of the burn to the Terrio property here.
Yes, yeah.
And that firm was built, very robust, you've seen it on the sidewalk, and you, you can't see through it if you wanted to. Not to disparage Tab, but we submitted the details, we submitted as-built letters, and we were supposed to get a letter back that it was built in person, back. We never received it, so we just, we just checked it off as if, you know, we did our job, but, and, and I don't mean default planning department, but, um, you know, we, we, make it more, we did our due diligence on that, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if, if you haven't heard any complaints about it, then.
That's good, that's good.
It's behind us.
Yeah, in, in terms of the, uh, permits that you were, you were looking for the waiver on, if you look at the conclusions of law number two, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits. The proposed project requires a revised main DEP site location of Development Act permit approval. The required permit approval has been added to the conditions of approval, uh, it needs to be, we need to adjust it because it's not. What we have, what we have to say is that, uh, subject to your getting, no, it's not, not quite the right word.
Receiving.
We, yeah, we need, we need to get a copy of it, cuz we have copies of the, of the application. And now we need, when, when it comes in, we want a copy of the permit.
Absolutely.
That, we, we do that all the time.
Okay, good, that's what we, we prefer, and I.
Because it is, it is kind of difficult if you have to say to DEP, you know, they, they're still looking back seven years ago, wondering, did we ever give him a permit?
Yeah.
Well, sorry, but yeah. There's a lot of, a lot of things right now, waiting on that front, so, you know, we have.
Yeah, from Andy's perspective, as we've discussed in the sidewalk, it's just, we've got an operational campground, you're solely, you, in the summer, you, you gotta make hay, and this is a good time, you're gonna be making hay, and we can't start the stormwater pond like before, until we get our permits, you know, from the DEP, so we're putting our thumb, Andy's putting his thumb, waiting to hit the ground, and then, next thing you know, it's gonna be April, it's gonna be camping time again, you know.
Uh, yeah. Now, is that cistern that we were talking about, is that gonna be put in this year?
I think they, we, we, I'll check with the chief, at the end, they build out phase four, which is this big phase here, that we put in at the end of phase four. If you want anything different, we're happy to.
I mean, just in the event, I mean, if you needed it, it's there, that's why I'm saying it, if it's in the plan to putting it there, put it there this year, so if it's ever needed, you have it already.
Right, right, we can check with the chief on that, just to be clear about when he expects it to be put in, the main thing he told us is he wanted to, you know, two thousand feet, you know, from the
Yeah.
Highway, yeah, yeah.
I follow that, but I'm just saying, the sooner the better, so that it's there already.
Yeah.
It's sort of a, something on the end after you, so you know where everything is.
We're happy to.
Making easier on Andy already, I mean, uh.
But we got, we, for us.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I, what I'm suggesting, why don't we circle back with the chief, and just be clear with him when he would like to have that installed, and maybe make a condition of approval, that we install that in, you know, per the chief's recommendations or something like that, yes, we're happy to do that. Yeah, good point, Marty.
Another question. Um, Rick, uh, note three said there'll be a knock box, which is good, but I, I'm not sure where it's located, do you have, uh?
Okay.
But there's no indication of where the gate is, is located.
Oh, on the plant?
On the plant, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but it was easier to look on, sometimes.
The gate, I apologize, the gate is shown on, C one oh two, I'll point it out, not a box gate. Here. This is the, uh, yeah, the existing campground, you can come around here during the phase two, that's the tow road. The gate is right here, it's showing it, I guess it's.
Okay, it's on label.
A label.
No.
But see, that, that was originally put there because we were gonna have a standpipe out of Bentley's existing ballpark, so.
Yeah.
That's valid, it's, the gate's closed, which is no real reason for them to go down there, because.
The only.
The, the application.
The only reason would be, yeah, for fire emergency.
At the nine twelve.
Okay.
There is not to be any bars, catch like.
Right.
That's not also being used to go into the museum, is it? That tow road, is that being, being used to go to the museum?
I know, it's just locked, so.
No, but I mean, which way do you get to the museum?
Go up through the, uh.
Old Post, old post road.
No, usually you go into the campground up to the museum.
No, do, that, it's completely separate.
Yeah, yeah, that was part of the, part of the original, but, that.
No, I mean, in the summertime, they had bus trips up to the museum for the different, the show nights.
Through the campground?
Huh?
They would go through the campground?
That's what I'm asking is, I mean, they weren't taking it out on the, uh, oh, Long Cabin Road, uh, they were going up to the campground to the museum, that's why I ask you.
They don't take the short flights, like go around on the, they take it up the.
Russell Lake, two, one, that, the show, it's the thing.
Go down Long Cabin.
I'm just asking, I mean, I.
That's, that's what I always thought was happening, because I know we had the discussion, not so much about the, the fact that the museum was there, but when we first put the property in, we did not want it used as an entrance or an egress to, to.
Right.
Sorry, but.
Yeah.
Where I was at about using that road, so, so that's why we put the gate here.
Yeah, but I'm just asking a question, because I know, they usually have tours up to the museum for, on my car night.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking if you were, if you were running busloads of people up to the museum, we would have heard about it.
No, it's, it's, us. I, I, the whole problem inside of the one.
Yeah.
Going down like that, and when.
Yeah.
But yeah.
Yeah.
So this. There's also another tow road shown, coming into phase six.
Yeah.
Will that be remaining as a tow road, or is it gonna be just?
So, like, so. One of the things with the campground down here is that Bentley wanted, uh, these are ponds, this looks like a pond, this is just the outside, that's a bird, like an eagle.
Yeah.
Bentley doesn't wanna see or hear the campground, so it's, it's all, sorry. So, gonna build this big berm with some, and stock, get stockpile material, and then there's an existing old historic, you know, road here, but we're gonna meander that around to the, um, camp sites, but those, that's just for Bentley to, to take his little, this little gator. He wants to, just personally, wants to go to the campground, he can go in his bag, but it's gonna be gated, we don't want people, last thing he wants is cameras using that coming to the site, so this will be gated, and then that'll be just a private, like a eight-foot wide pathway here to take his, little, his little buggy to get over to camp.
So what, what will happen with, uh, lot number one twenty-one, right?
Just, I'm sure, just go through the lot there, there.
Yeah. Okay.
But we'll just put a gate, maybe we should call, we'll put a gate beyond the road, but we don't want people using that to get to this site.
Yeah. Okay.
To discourage anybody who wants to keep themselves separate from the campground, be able to get to the campground, get to the.
Okay, so that'll be for Bentley's personal use, and, okay, makes sense.
Not for the camp.
Any other, any other discussion? Any, any other questions? The, the only thing that I can see right now is that we do not have the conditions of approval, we have the conclusions of law, but the conditions of approval need to be modified.
We're gonna be adding.
We're going to be adding, and taking away, condition number three that is in here, we've already changed, because we're going to do it on a phased basis instead of the one-year, two-year requirement, so we're gonna have to, to get these rewritten. And then vote on, vote on them at the next meeting.
We could.
I was gonna say, we modify them now, vote them, and.
That's what I was gonna ask, so they don't have to wait another.
Sign it once.
Can't we?
But we can't sign these.
No, but we can give.
Who can vote on, just sign.
Oh, okay.
Changes made.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That way we don't have to bring it back up at the next meeting, right?
Right, thank you.
That's true, we'll just have to sign them at the next meeting.
Right. So which one to exactly are we gonna modify?
We're going to modify number
No.
Number two and number three, right?
Right, that.
And I think with number two.
Number two is the request.
Is the.
For a ten point five point three, correct?
No, no, not, not there, in the findings of fact, they're not, they're not there. Ten point seven.
Yeah.
Right.
That's true.
Oh, yeah. We need to get it to, to look similar to the way it was set up, uh, when you and Tad worked it out in terms of how you do the bonding.
Do you have that language, bro? So let's give it to Sam, so that she can modify this according to the language that was in the original agreement.
Uh, well, if I could, sure, if I could, I'll, I'll read what the note says, and see if that's acceptable, I can.
She does, if she has her laptops.
Yeah, you can reach me.
I'm gonna read it out loud first.
Yeah.
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 Otherwise.
Okay, uh, I think it's note number ten we're talking about, the performance guarantee.
Correct.
Performance guarantee, parentheses, conditional guarantee, colon, at the completion of each phase, the applicant shall provide to the CEO with an as-built record drawing along with an inspection report that all improvements in the phase have been completed in accordance with the approved plans. That was the original note, it's the same.
And is that, that's here on your documents that you gave us as well?
It's on, uh, drawing C one oh one on the notes, I'm, you have the right.
So since it's included as a note, we don't need it as a condition, we could scratch that, would, would that be right?
Well, I think she should, I think she should ultimately modify it so that it's in the paperwork.
Yeah.
And not just on the plan.
Okay. Doesn't hurt.
Sam, do you see where that is?
Um, yeah, I do, on their plan, on that note.
Yeah.
Yeah, on C one oh one.
Yeah.
So you're gonna insert that language.
Yeah.
Take out the current language that's there.
Yep.
No, I think you wanna keep that left, and so the planning board may grant a one-year extension of conditional use review if compelling evidence presented that the additional time is required to meet federal, state, and local permits.
Oh, that is on. We're not, we're not on three yet.
We're on two.
Just two. This is two, note two, so we'll replace what's here for note two with what's.
Okay, I thought we were looking at three.
Not yet.
No, no.
Yeah, okay, alright. I'm ahead of you, bud.
Yeah.
That's okay, now, now we're on the three point.
One step ahead.
I'm sitting next to Zach, I'm smart up tonight.
On my phone.
And we wanna replace number three with condition eleven, that's on the plan.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
So Sam, you got that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And that's, and that's exactly because it, it's, originally, I'm sure it said for phases one through seven, and now it says for, from three through seven.
Yep.
So we have that accurate in terms of what we're, we're looking for. Okay?
Yeah.
So let me flip this up like this. Okay. We will require a motion to approve.
Unless you don't wanna make, make a motion. I will move that we approve it with those conditions.
Second.
And, okay, motion by Tom again, seconded by Zachary Shapiro. Arundel Planning Board, Findings of Fact and Conclusions of Law, Site Plan Amendment, Conditional Use Review, Bentley's Campground Expansion Phases Three Through Seven, Twenty Four Bentley's Way. Background, the applicant submitted a site plan amendment, conditional use review application to the planning board to modify phases three through seven at Bentley's RV campground, which received planning board approval in two thousand seventeen. Modifications include a reduction of total RV campground sites from one hundred eighty-seven to one hundred and fifty-one. Minor changes to internal drive layouts, relabeling of phases four through seven, revisions of the approved stormwater management plan, minor adjustments of the proposed subsurface wastewater leach field, revegetation measures. The property is located at tax map thirty, lot twenty-four, and is within the downtown business two, DB two district.
May I stop you for a minute?
Absolutely.
You, you added a revision, a little minor thing, the, the fourth line down, revisions.
Revisions.
We should add, you, you added of, or to the approved stormwater, just a minor little grammar. Check.
After the word revision.
It should say two.
Phases four point seven revisions to the approved stormwater.
I added that in.
You added it without, you just saw it, your brain knew it, and came up.
Okay, the planning board deemed the, the application complete at the August tenth, two thousand twenty-four planning board meeting. A sidewalk was held September tenth, two thousand twenty-four. The applicant is requesting a waiver from section ten point five point three from receiving state and federal permits prior to the planning board, prior to planning board approval. And amended DEP SLO, SLODA permit was submitted February two thousand twenty-four. At the request of the fire chief, the applicant has included a new ten thousand gallon cistern with details provided in the plan set. Findings of fact, applicant BW Campground Realty LLC. Number two, owner, same as applicant. Number three, location, twenty-four Bentley's Way, tax map thirty, lot twenty-four. Number four, zoning, downtown business two, DB two. Number five, existing land use campground. Number six, proposed land use campground. Number seven, acreage forty-six point two eight acres. Conclusions of law, the planning board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria set forth in section ten point six point four in the land use ordinance as follows. Number one, the proposed can, project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance. The proposed project conforms to all applicable zoning and performance standards. Number two, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits. The proposed project requires a revised main DEP site location of Development Act permit approval. This required permit approval has been added to the conditions of approval below, no other federal and or state permits are required for the project. Number three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection, and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. The proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety, fire protection, and emergency services. Number four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. The proposed project does not impact the quality of surface or groundwater resources. Number five, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff during the site, now from the site, during a twenty-five-year storm event, and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. The pro, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities, and will not produce additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five-year storm event, and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. No impacts to existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems are anticipated. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact on environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important. Critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources. Or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environments, or the community. No impacts to environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources. Or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environments, or the community are anticipated. Number eight, the proposed project will not produce node, noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances. That will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. None of the above nuisances are anticipated. Number nine, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government. No negative fiscal impact on municipal government is anticipated. Number ten, that the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood. The proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Conditions of approval. Based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law, the Arundel Planning Board approves the site plan conditional use review. Of BW Campground Realty LLC to expand their existing campground as herein. Presented contingent upon the following conditions. Number one. Any modification from the approved plan shall be reviewed by the planning board. Number two. Performance guarantee, conditional guarantee, at the. At the completion of each phase, the applicant shall provide to the CEO. With an as-built record drawing along with an inspection report that all improvements. In the phase have been completed in accordance with the approved plans. Number three. Phasing review, master plan approval for phases three through seven is granted with a condition that at the end of each. Three-year period, starting at the completion. Of partially completed phase three and commencement of page four, the applicant submits evidence for the planning board approval. That the work completed in the prior three-year period. No, that's not what we said. That's. That's what Rick wants. Is the three year. So it's, let me, let me reword it. Phasing review, master plan approval for phases three through seven is granted with a condition at the end of. Each.
Each phase, yeah.
A review is conducted by the planning board or. A three-year period of time has elapsed. Whichever comes first.
Yeah.
Starting at the completion of partially completed phase three, commencement of phase four. The applicant shall submit evidence for planning board approval that the work completed. In the prior period is in compliance with the plans and approvals prior to the commencement of the next phase. The review shall not constitute a full conditional use permit application process. And the review shall include the following. Updated traffic assessments. Review or of as-built information, conditions, or work completed. In the prior period. And a sidewalk in public period may be scheduled by the planning board.
Good.
Condition number four. Provide the the required new main D E P site location of Development Act. Permit approval and any related permits that you had to get. I don't know what they are.
N R P A.
N N R P A, okay. So once you get those, provide them to the. To the uh, uh, planning office. And then number five. No, there isn't. I don't need number five. For some reason, I thought I needed another one.
Cistern and everything's already covered, so.
That, that's the one. Number five. The cistern is to be maintained by the owner of the property. In perpetuity. Make Susan happy. Any questions, any discussion about this? Yeah, Marty?
No, just, this may be out of the realm, but. If any event. Which we've talked about possible. Of another. Uh, thing going across the street. There may be a uh, a need for. Right-hand turn or traffic study or something other. This may work, it can juge you with both of them.
But thi- this is not something that we have control over. That is this, because it's a state.
If it is, it would be joined together.
That's up to the state.
Okay, I mean, I.
Yeah, because we, we don't have any control over what the state says in terms of the traffic on Route one. So if they want, if they want turning lanes put in, they're gonna talk to both, both of the campgrounds.
Okay, I'm just thinking as. But that would probably be a ball ahead.
That'd probably be addressed, Marty, at the time that that.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just trying to take the head in the course of the ball. That's all I'm mentioning now, so it was discussed, it thought of instead of a hindsight.
Any, any other? Comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? It is approved.
Thank you very much.
We'll get the uh. Conclusions. Printed out and have them ready for you.
Okay, and to the chair, I assume you want to sign the plan again?
Yeah.
Yes. Which case I will make sure that I, when I get those conclusions, I will change my note number eleven to match your note. The condition number four.
And have a signature block. I know, just, just as a thought, I mean.
Yeah.
Thinking ahead.
Yeah, we've got that, so, um, and it doesn't have to be reported, correct? It's just goes in, so is a color copy okay with the board or the? Or prefer? We've just done a color.
Yeah, it it doesn't have to get recorded, correct?
It does not, no.
Okay, then, yeah, I don't think it'll matter.
So once we receive that, we can get a hard copy or copy coming with the board, coming copies that the board need to sign.
Do we need?
Rick, can I, can I ask, since you wanna, you have to be changing that sheet. Could you add a note of just pointing at the the gate?
Gate.
Just, just to label what it is. Yeah.
Yes, I would say we need, we need two copies. We need one for us and we need, and he's gonna want one that has our signatures on it as well.
Okay, so what I would typically do then, ask the board is that when we bring it in to give it to Andy, I assume we'll bring three. We'll keep one, we like to keep one for our files and we'll scan, we scan it that way we can send it to our whole team.
Doing a good job.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Can I ask a question about the project across the street, the new, it's a campground?
We can, we can't talk about it because they're not here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Is that, is that on the agenda? I mean, is it, is it?
Not yet, nothing yet.
There was, there's been a preliminary discussion and it didn't go anywhere yet.
Okay, thank you.
So it might never happen. Speculation.
Okay, we have a few votes that we eat on. We'll see if they, any of them come to fruition.
Well, we want to just keep this, keep this one going. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Move to adjourn.
We have. We have a motion to adjourn. It does not require a vote. We are done.